I'm very proud because before I started this, this job right here, I was homeless. I used to sleep under the bridge and most of the streets that I'm cleaning up now, that's the streets I used to sleep on. I'm thankful that they gave me opportunity. You know, it's changed my life tremendously. Like I said, I was homeless. You know, now I'm in the process of looking for a house to buy. Through this program, you know, I came with my addiction. Man, I'm so thankful. You know, I thank the staff at Good Source for giving me the opportunity, man. They helped me out tremendously. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Good Source staff and the city of Orlando. The most rewarding part of this job is getting up every day and trying to keep Orlando beautiful, you know, doing my part and making sure the community and residents are happy with their areas are getting cleaned up, the streets are getting cleaned up.
Okay, welcome to the October 19th, 2020 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the
The prayer.
Led by Commissioner Ortiz.
Give me just a second, Mayor, if you will.
A new picture, Commissioner.
I know. It's hopefully is a makes me look a little younger.
Looks like your younger brother.
I can always say it was my younger.
It's like the high school yearbook. What is that?
Right, man. Here we go. Yep. All right, ready. Let's all bow our heads. Oh, we thank you for allowing us to gather this afternoon to deal with the needs of your people in our community. We thank you because everything you do is perfect and has tremendous purpose, even when sometimes we may not understand it. Or we also thank you for the sensitive community that you have blessed us with, for we are always thinking about ways to make things better for our fellow brothers and sisters. On this afternoon, we ask you to bless us with wisdom to decide on the matters of our community, your people. So we do right by you and bring all our community to prosperity while providing quality of life. We ask you this in the precious name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. I place allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's call the meeting officially to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, make a determination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business is agenda review and City Council meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor. If it gets over by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have no awards, presentations, or recognitions today, so we'll move to the mayor's update. And I just want, I think I forgot to say this at agenda review, but we were going to move item B2 to the November 9th City Council meeting today. So we'll be removing B2 from the consent agenda today. I want to begin by sending the City Council's condolences to the family of Commissioner Emeritus Daisy Linum, who passed away recently at the opportunity, along with Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Hill, to attend services for Daisy on Saturday. And they're beautiful and a fitting tribute for her. She was a member of our council for 16 years, representing District 5 until 2014. And she was one of the longest-tenured commissioners in our history. She served with great dedication and passion. She fought hard every day for District 5. You can see her legacy in some of the buildings that got Paramore from the Amway Center to Florida A&amp;M College of Law and City View. And probably the blueprint is one of her shining accomplishments. Most importantly, she will be remembered, though, for proving the quality of life of our residents by championing education and career training, healthcare, economic development. If you'd join me, please, in a moment of silence to recognize Commissioner Linum. Thank you. COVID-19 is still with us. I want to thank everybody who continues their effort in controlling the spread of virus by taking pandemic precautions, wearing a mask fully over your nose and mouth, washing your hands, physically distancing. It makes a difference and it definitely helps control the spread. Early voting begins today and through Sunday, November 1st. The city is helping out in that regard by allowing the supervisor to use the Disney atrium in the Amway Center as an early voting location. It's open 8 to 8. And it'll also have a drop-off, Dropbox for ballots if you so are you so inclined to do that. There's obviously several ways to vote. You can mail-in ballot. You can come early vote. You can drop your mail-in ballot at a Dropbox, or you can vote in person on Election Day. But I urge everybody to let their voice be heard and vote in the upcoming election. Couple items of note on the agenda is hearings number one, Holocaust Center lease agreement. It's a public hearing on a proposed lease agreement with Holocaust Center to build a world-class cultural destination in downtown. And we'll talk more about that when we get to it. That will move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a number of items that were worked on through a single vote of council. We allow each of our commissioners to comment on the consent agenda and update you on important happenings from their districts. We rotate the order that we do that. And today, Commissioner Tony Ortiz is first up.
Surprise, everybody, today. I'm going to sound like Commissioner Gray. All my items are in the website. So I'm going to yield my time to my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move to Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Tony. I'll take your time. And for the next four or five minutes, let me share a little bit about. No, I won't do that. But I do have a couple of things I'd like to share. Commissioner, you know, Mayor, thank you for your comments about Commissioner Linum. It was, it was an honor to serve with her. And while we, but it heads a couple of times, I never, never questioned her devotion to the city or devotion to, to her district. And that is probably the greatest admiration that we can have, is that, is that we continue to strive for what's best for our city, even when sometimes we don't agree. But we know that if we don't question our motives, we will accomplish great things together. And that's a tribute to your leadership and a tribute to Commissioner Linum. Also want to remind everybody or thank everybody for filling out their census. And Mayor, thank you for your comment about voting. I had an opportunity to pass, to drop off my votes this morning. And they took them in a socially-distanced way. And they double-checked to make sure all the signatures were there. And they put them into the box for me. It was, I think I liked doing that better so they can kind of look to make sure that's the first stage of having the signatures on the outside is accurate. So please, if you're, if you're listening to our voices, voting is one of those rights and privileges that we have that we should take advantage of every time we get a chance to do it. Some quick updates from the community. The, well, disappointed that the College Park Jazz Fest is not going to occur this year because of the social distancing. They've come up with a crazy idea, which is to do the College Park Spark, or the College Spark, they're calling it. And they're going to socially distance the event all the way up and down Edgewater Drive and run a trolley and have some fun with that area at that time. So that's going to be November 7th at 5 o'clock. It's going to be a great opportunity. It's going to run from Sheridan all the way to Parr Street. So it's 1.4 miles up and down the College Park Main Street. So please, please, now and join in. The long-awaited Pompei, Pompei, the Immortal City exhibit will start on October 26th and go through January 24th. Orlando's only one of the three locations in the country that has this exhibit. It's over in my district over at Lock Haven. So please come and enjoy that. College Park Neighbor Association has started a really neat thing. They've started a thing called College Park Cares. It's a four-session about social justice and how we can be engaged, all of us can be engaged in social justice. The Valencia Peace and Justice Institute is doing it. They kicked off the first one last week. It was really neat to see that and had a good crowd, about 25 to 30 that were there. They're charging a small fee to be a part of it. But the most important thing is people who really want to make a change in our community. And we appreciate that. And Lou Gardens is having a socially-distanced November 6th on their, their movie nights. And they were doing The Way We Were, which is probably a great title for anything happening in 2020, is The Way We Were. So for that's worth. And Mayor, I have some comments later on, on the hearing on the Holocaust agreement. And I appreciate the work that our staff has done with that. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And our community did experience two devastating losses last week. They were both champions of diversity and inclusion. I am so heartbroken because of my health issues. I was not able to attend Commissioner Linum's funeral. But I got to, I had the pleasure of serving for 14 of 16 of Commissioner Linum's years on the Orlando City Council. And she was not the city's first black city commissioner, but she certainly was one of the best city commissioners. And she was absolutely a character. Daisy did not suffer fools gladly. She had to fight for everything that she did over a very vocal and small minority of people who were constantly against everything she was doing. I know you cannot relate to that at all, Commissioner Hill. And, you know, she was always there for, for the LGBTQ community. On one of her first city council meetings, it was the vote on whether we were to fly the rainbow flags, even though Watermark had done all the, all the processes to fly the flags in downtown. It came before the city council. It was a very divisive issue. And it was one of Daisy's first meetings. And she not only voted with us, she told the religious folk who were opposed in no uncertain terms that they were not being very Christian. She was a staunch ally to the LGBTQ community every step of the way, even voting against the wishes of her own church pastor. And she even talked to a lot of the pastors and said, look, this is about equality and we should not be opposed to this. That was Daisy. That was Daisy's advocacy. Daisy made me feel welcome when others shunned me for being the first openly gay elected official. So rest in power, my friend. You will be missed. And I see Commissioner Robert Stewart smiling. She was an absolute joy, character. She could be tough, but she had a heart of gold. So rest in, rest in peace, my friend. And also Sam Singhhouse. He was a beacon in Orlando's performing arts community, one of the original KJLs in La Caja Fall. He returned to Orlando when he was done with his Broadway run to open Big Bang, one of the most successful clubs in downtown Orlando. And he graced the stage for hundreds of fundraisers. If there was ever a fundraiser to raise money for any kind of a worthy cause, Sam Singhhouse and/or Miss Sammy was there to provide the emcee. He was not a drag queen. He was a female impersonator. He made sure to tell everyone that. His smile lit up a room. His blue eyes beamed. He loved his community, advocated politically for equality, and educated young people on the importance of voting. And one of Sam's last acts on this earth was to vote. So if you want to honor Miss Sammy, young people, get out there and vote. Vote like your lives depended upon it, because it does. There is actually a temporary memorial that we set up over at Lake Highland Park, over where Sam used to walk his dog Bo every day. And I want to thank Commissioner Stewart for working with me on this. There are six Rainbow Adirondack chairs over there. There's some rainbow lights. Some folks have been leaving flowers. And the first night that we put it out, there was an absolutely stunning red sunset. And there were families gathered there to put flowers out for Sam. So, you know, we're all heartbroken. We're going to certainly miss Miss Sammy and Sam Singhhouse. And the really, the really sad thing about COVID, the really cruel thing about COVID is that we can't hug each other. We can't console each other during these devastating losses. So we can hold all these special people in our hearts and remember their remarkable legacies of accomplishment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you also, Mayor and council. I also would like to send my condolences. As the mayor stated, I was able to join him for Commissioner Linum's funeral. And, you know, Commissioner Linum will always be held in high esteem in the city and especially in District 5. I am forever indebted to the work that Commissioner Linum has done and her legacy and that she leaves for all of us to build on. And I, and I'm certain that we're making her proud, Mayor, with continuing her legacy towards education, economic and development, and affordable housing there in the Paramore area. But I also know that Creative Village piece was very important to Commissioner Linum, especially when it came to STEM and technology. And so I'm sad to see her passing, but know that her, her work should live on. And also to the friends and family, to Miss Sammy, as Commissioner Sheehan affectionately referred to the female impersonator, not the drag queen. I do remember our last meeting, I believe, right before COVID and the shutdown, where we were able to have her grace our, our stage once again. And I believe that was Christmas, Mayor, when we did our Christmas outing there at Lake Yola for our lighting. And Miss Sammy, I believe Commissioner was one of the folks that came on stage and presented. I think she brought you out, Commissioner. And I just saw that special relationship that you and Sam had. So with that, as the mayor stated, today is the first day of early voting. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor, along with Orlando Magic and the Little Brown James Foundation for creating the opportunity for early voting there at the Amway Center. And a big, a big, big shout out to Craig Boykin. He's been working diligently to put all those things in order. And it sounds easy, Mayor, but as you know, it wasn't that easy because right now we're hosting the WWE there. So trying to configure how we were all going to do that. So those folks behind the scenes that made that happen deserves our applause. In addition, I've partnered with several community organizations that includes Commissioner Brokary Burns, Orange County Clerk of Courts, Tiffany Musaror, Equal Ground, the African American Council of Christian Council, and the Florida Rights Restoration, and the Urban League, along with the African American Chamber. This weekend, we'll be having something that we've called the Vote Fest. We've been working on this for a while to get our participation up. Here in the city of Orlando, it's all-inclusive. Commissioner Sheehan is going to be a speaker and a part of this affair on that Saturday, where we will have something that's called Voting is Queen, where we'll have women here in the community to lead the efforts on getting out the vote. And that will be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, we'll be working with Florida's Rights Restoration Coalition, where hundreds of returning citizens will be going to vote, maybe for their first time, or even years that they haven't voted there across the street at the Amway Center. And then that Sunday, we will be led by the faith-based community with Souls to the Poles, where we will march from Camping World Stadium there to the SED lawn. They will have a gospel artist, J.J. Harrison, and Youth Praise, along with other community. Am I still here? We just had some lights go out. Can you still hear me?
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Okay, wonderful. There. And I failed to mention on that Friday, October 23rd, we will have over 100 pastors and those faith leaders go across the street at 10:45 at the Amway Center to cast a vote together to, to kick that off. They're asking everyone to wear black. And if you're anyone in the faith-based community, you are invited. Then they'll go over to the Shiloh Baptist Church there in the Paramore area to do phone banking from, from 11 o'clock to 7 o'clock that evening. Our hope is that we will bring out over 20,000 people to vote there in the Paramore area for early voting. And on Tuesday, October 13th, our office hosted the Camping World Stadium Pre-Bid Package 3 conference call, where those that are interested in bidding on the renovation of Camping World Stadium, they had the opportunity to listen. And then they had an opportunity to do a matchmaking event, which will be Thursday at 1:00 PM at the Camping World Stadium, where they can meet some of the primes and sub-primes that will be hiring some of the subcontractors. And that's all. Oh, one important thing, which I am so excited to see, and I'll talk about that when, when time has come up, for our events that we're going to do over at the Dr. Phillips Center of 180 days of events there on the lawn. But we were able to finally kick off a small snippet of what's to come there on that, on that Dr. Phillips Lawn over at Plaza Live Theater in Commissioner Sheehan's district. We featured C.C. Tenille and Soul Commotion. It was well-attended. It was social distancing. It was open air. And it was fun have-all, especially myself. I hadn't heard live music in a long time. And I think it was, I like to give my thanks to the Philharmonic Symphony, their volunteers, and also the Plaza Live staff. They did a tremendous job. And I think, Mayor, they showed us that these things can happen, maybe in a smaller version, but we can start to get out and enjoy the outdoors. And with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, my fellow commissioners. It was an honor to attend the funeral of Commissioner Emeritus Daisy Linum and offer a few words of comfort to the, to the family. And so I just, my heart went out and goes out to the family. But I'm thankful for all the work that she did, not just in District 5, but also for the city of Orlando in general. The self-response rate and field data collection operations for the 2020 census concluded on October 15th. Mayor, I'd like to thank Reggie McGill and his team for their efforts in promoting the completion of the census. Mayor Reggie also himself actually came out and helped canvass the community, provide education, and knocked on a few doors. So I appreciate his commitment to that. I'm also excited about Vote Fest that Commissioner Hill just mentioned. We just need to encourage everyone to come out and take advantage and participate of all the events that are happening this weekend. Also, I had the opportunity to speak with several youth groups about the importance of pre-registering to vote and getting involved. Those groups include Jack and Jill of America, the Orlando Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, their embodied youth group, as well as the Chermes of the Delta Omicron, Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha. Also, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, where we collectively raise awareness about where we collectively raise awareness about early detection, self-breast exams, mammograms, and access to palliative care. And also during this month, we also recognize the many survivors of breast cancer. And I would like to give a very special acknowledgement of my mother, Barbara Paige Burns, who is a 16-year survivor. Mom, if you're listening, I love you. But also, and to those who are battling this disease, I say keep fighting and give breast cancer hell. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Gray?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. On Tuesday, the 6th of October, Loria Park held their National Night Out socially-distanced way. I want to thank our public service, our public safety professionals, along with Jean Thatcher, who oversees the National Night Out for Loria Park, and 22 block captains. So they were able to organize everything on a socially-distanced thing. It was a great, a great event, and I want to thank them. On the 13th of October, we had our second Affordable Housing Task Force meeting. Just wanted to share with the council that that committee meets every two weeks, and we're preparing a report to share with council by the end of the year with our thoughts on what we think some vision and strategies for affordable housing may be. So that's coming up between now and the end of the year. And then Saturday, as has been mentioned before, my wife and I were fortunate enough to attend Commissioner Lyman's funeral and acknowledge her passing. I must admit, I have not attended a three-hour funeral before. But if anybody deserves a three-hour funeral, it was her. So I consider her a great friend and colleague. She, for some reason, supported me when I first ran. I have no idea why, but she did. And I'm always grateful for what she's done for me and certainly for the city. On the agenda, I wanted to mention B4 real quick. That is a contract with American Landscape to kind of step in during the COVID issue to help maintain our right-of-ways and easements. We're the city beautiful for a reason, and that is we need to continue to maintain our common areas. And thanks for the staff for pivoting on that and getting those folks lined up to do that. And finally, on C4, which is kind of the final step for us to do SimCom out by Lake Down in the Medical City, you know, an aviation training company that's expanding and bringing even more high-paying jobs, which we really need. So thanks to them for doing that. So with that, Mayor, I will move the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, without objection, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA, which has two items of business. Thomas, number one?
All right, thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number one is approving a downtown commercial and residential building improvement program funding agreement between the CRA and Patty Lou's Donuts for property located at 139 East Pine Street. We commonly call these facade grants, as you recall. This program, as you know, allows a three-year interest-free deferred loan for existing properties to do qualified improvement. Patty Lou's has applied for assistance, as it says, at 139 East Pine. Program allows for a dollar-for-dollar match or 50% not to exceed $100,000. The improvements of this application are just under $11,000, and therefore, the applicant will qualify for just under $5,500. The Grant Review Committee has recommended approval, and staff is requesting approval today.
The move?
Second?
Move approved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion? Are you none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. And the Dr. Phillips Funding Agreement.
Item number two is approving a funding agreement with the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts for the Front Yard Festival. As the mayor has indicated and as you found in your individual briefing, Commissioner, I hope you agree, this is a unique, very ambitious initiative being undertaken by our friends at the Dr. Phillips Center to offer some six months of continuous programming in the form of events for all demographics, all ages, families, and otherwise. So very inclusive, something for all. Again, six months plus of programming, 150 to 180 events. The funding agreement, this funding agreement provides $250,000 in CRA funding to the Dr. Phillips Center towards the operation of the festival. Again, we think this is a unique event, especially for these times during COVID, and something that will re-energize downtown, give families and all, from 1 to 100, a reason to come back to downtown into a very safe environment. And we certainly are requesting that the CRA approve the attached funding agreement between the Dr. Phillips Center and the CRA, and authorize the chair and the executive director to execute the agreement.
Thomas?
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill.
Mayor, can Thomas talk about something really important? Can you talk about the community commitment, Thomas, that the Phillips Center have made on this agreement for those that might not be able to afford or to participate in some of the events, what they're going to do?
Certainly, Commissioner happy to talk about it. The Dr. Phillips Center, as I said, is, these events will be totally inclusive. More than two-thirds, more than 100 of the 150-plus events will be offered free to the public. There will be special opportunities for those of our underserved community to make sure not only youth, but adults, seniors as well, are included and have access to many, many, many of these events on a daily basis. And so it's truly an inclusive effort, again, that's holistically approaching the community and something literally for everybody. Again, I say from 1 to 100, there's something here that will be for you. And nobody's overlooked, nobody's forgotten about. They're looking with, of course, the mayor's PKZ program, other youth programs. Within the document, they're committed to working with youth programs and senior programs within the city that are authorized programs. And so we very much look forward to this.
And another thing that they've done, I think, is very telling of their commitment, is that they've worked extensively with Advent Health to make sure that they have a COVID plan, to make sure that they have all of our citizens safe there. And this has been well-thought-out. So I'm excited about this venture. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Mayor? Let me also share my excitement with it, too. I think it's a really neat idea, and none of us know when all this is going to be over. But I do think that they have come up with a really neat plan to jump-start downtown in a safe way, so that as this is over, you'll be able to kind of fold back into something that's kind of almost back to normal. But I think the way they've done it, the way they've done the socially distancing, how they've set up is great. And I think it's a great use of our CRA dollars to bring people back to downtown Orlando and to become a partner in this. So, Thomas, thank you for your leadership on this, and thank you to Kathy Ramsberger.
And I agree with both you commissioners. It'll be interesting, and it'll be great to get some activities going in a safe manner. And as Commissioner Hill mentioned, the Plaza Live is doing a smaller-scale type of thing every Thursday for, I forget how long, maybe three months. But I encourage you to support them as well.
Mayor, can we come to your balcony to watch the performances?
Sure, absolutely. Actually, that'll be a pretty good viewing area. And socially-distanced.
Of course.
Okay, further discussion, hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Further business, Thomas?
Mayor, no further business. If I may, I'd like to make two comments. One is pertinent to the Holocaust Center project that was approved earlier. I just want to thank all of you. Obviously, it wasn't a CRA item, but it's obviously very important to the future of the CRA as we bring what I think will be, I think we all agree, will be a world-class, iconic cultural amenity of education and inspiration to our downtown. I think it'll put downtown on the itineraries of tens, if not hundreds of thousands of visitors a year who are visiting our area and seeing the theme parks and all that other stuff. It'll give them a reason to come downtown. I think they will come, so I really appreciate that support. And I've enjoyed working with that team. They're doing it the right way. I'd like to also, Mayor, if I may, add my voice to the chorus of honors to the late Commissioner Daisy Lyman and say simply for that bold, passionate, and true, and dedicated community leader that it was my honor to serve. Thank you, sir. That's it.
Okay.
Mayor, can I add on about the Holocaust Center also? I'm so excited about and support.
That's still coming up.
Oh, okay.
Just not confused that we have an hearing on that, so. Okay, then if there's no further business in the CRA, we'll stand adjourned and reconvene city council meeting with out objection. Let's see, where we are? That brings us to new business hearings, the Blue Apartments Plan Development. At our last meeting on October 5th, council agreed to place the Blue Apartment Plan Development application on new business for discussion. At this meeting, the item was recommended for approval by the MPB on August 18th. Today's requested action is to accept the MPB recommendation. This is kind of like a quasi-judicial appeal, although there was no appeal to this action. So we're going to give staff 10 minutes and the applicant 10 minutes, and there is no appellate. So we'll hear from Elizabeth, and then we'll hear from Becky Wilson, representing the applicant. Elizabeth?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name's Elizabeth Dang, here to present on the Blue Apartments. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, can you see that all right?
You can.
So this project is located at 5750 Stonewall Jackson Road. It's about 1.4 acres just east of Seminole Boulevard. The request is to rezone the property to plan development to construct a multifamily development of 72 apartment units, where 90% of the units are proposed to be affordable housing. The request includes a density bonus, a parking reduction, and landscape buffer reductions, and I'll walk through each of those. First of all, the future land use is called Mixed Use Corridor Medium Intensity, which is similar to what's found along Seminole Boulevard. The associated zoning is MU1 with the aircraft noise overlay and the Seminole Boulevard Special Plan overlay. And MU1 is a mixed-use district that allows commercial, retail, gas station, office, and residential multifamily. This aerial photograph shows the context. You can see multifamily to the east, south, and north, and commercial gas station to the west. In 2012, the subject property was platted as part of the Stonewall Plaza subdivision. The current owners purchased the property in 2019. And on August 18th of this year, the Municipal Planning Board recommended approval of the requested PD. So this site plan shows an L-shaped building. It's three stories tall with parking in the rear and a one-way access into the site and out of the site. The site plan also includes several motorcycle parking spaces at the end of the main landscape island, as well as bike racks provided throughout the property. This rendering shows the three-story building in a contemporary architectural standard. The first request is for a density bonus. And this does not require PD zoning, but it is an additional request. And the bonus criteria include two uses, which they've provided with both affordable and market-rate housing, enhanced streetscaping, onsite landscaping, and they're also providing on-street parking. The code allows 42 units by right without a bonus, up to, and they're proposing 72 dwelling units, which is 51 units per acre, so below the maximum bonus. In addition, they're asking for some revisions to the landscaping requirements in order to make an efficient parking lot design. So instead of being in the typical landscape island locations, there's the wider parking aisle in the center, which includes additional landscaping there. Per city code, depending on the number of bedrooms, there's a different parking requirement for each type of multifamily unit, ranging from .75 spaces for an efficiency unit, which is typically less than 500 square feet, all the way up to a requirement of two spaces per three-bedroom unit. So for this project, the requirement for the 61-bedroom units is 90 spaces and 21 spaces for the 12 two-bedroom units, for a total of 111 parking spaces. The request at MPB is for a parking reduction to propose a total of 73 parking spaces, which is a 34% reduction, as well as allow the on-street parking spaces to count toward required parking spaces. After some discussion with the applicant after MPB, we worked with our transportation staff to allow the project to convert some spaces from standard nine-foot-wide parking spaces to compact eight-foot-wide parking spaces, which results in a net increase of six parking spaces. So the request here before you today is for 79 parking spaces, which is a 28% parking reduction, which will mean that each unit has one off-street parking space, and there will be seven additional visitor spaces, including the five on-street parking spaces. So city code provides specific criteria to allow for parking reductions, and staff evaluates those requests and makes a recommendation. So this project, based on regular city code, qualifies for these four different criteria, 5% each, for a total of 20% reduction for affordable housing, separation from single-family residential, provision of enhanced bike and pedestrian facilities, and proximity to transit. So the PD zoning was requested to obtain an additional reduction for reasons that the code didn't really predict. And that is, in this particular case, the one-bedroom units are less than 500 square feet. And but for the bedroom walls, the 61-bedroom units would qualify as efficiencies that are allowed to have 7.75 parking spaces per unit, which would reduce the parking requirement to 66 spaces. And that's below what the applicant is proposing. And based on discussions, it was really felt by staff and the applicant that one-bedroom units are a far-preferred option, and that it would be preferred to allow for a parking reduction rather than require all those one-bedroom units to be constructed as efficiencies. So today's staff recommendation is to accept the minutes and approve the actions of the MPB from August 18th, for this case, number 0N20210013, subject to the following additional conditions. A minimum of 79 parking spaces is required, including the on-street spaces. The site plan may be updated to replace some of the typical parking spaces with compact spaces. No handicap-accessible spaces may be reduced in any dimension. The site plan must be updated at the time of permitting to clearly show the dimension and locations of all accessible, compact, on-street, and regular parking spaces. Second condition is to ensure that the parking lot will function. A parking management plan must be submitted with the building permits to include strategies to ensure compliance with parking with the compact spaces, including a monitoring program. So that's the recommendation for today. The next steps, if approved, would be to direct staff to prepare a PD ordinance and schedule for two readings of the ordinance. Otherwise, if denied, a PD per our city code. If a PD is denied, the applicant has to wait one year to apply for a new PD, but would have the option to propose a new master plan in lieu of a plan development zoning. And I'm available if anyone has questions.
Okay, are there questions for Elizabeth?
Yeah, Mayor, I do have a question for Elizabeth. Elizabeth, with these reductions that we are, we would be looking at to approve, how does that compare with other developments in affordable housing developments that have happened throughout the city? And does this fall in line, or are we offering something more here than we've done in the past?
Right, I did pull some other affordable projects. So Amelia Court, which is open downtown, has a 36% reduction approved. Lexington Court was approved with a 31% reduction. And then several senior projects have been approved. Pendana at West Lakes Phase Two. Pandana at West Lakes Phase Two has a 40% reduction, although Phase One, which is the family housing, meets the code. Fern Grove was approved with a 17% parking reserve, which means they're building 17 less parking, percent less parking spaces, but they're reserving space in case they need those additional spaces in the future. So there are several examples, and the percentage range is similar to the, to this project.
Elizabeth, and so what was the total reduction? Because there's a lot of different calculations. So where do we fall on the total reduction that's being requested now?
So they're right now at a 28% reduction.
28, okay, thank you.
Yes, and I want, just for clarity, for everyone to know, these projects that Elizabeth referred to were all in District Five, the west side of Orlando, where we have went above and beyond with reductions so that we can put affordable housing in place. That's where all this is condensed, and I just wanted to clarify that, Mayor Danner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Thank you. Elizabeth, help me with the, the street parking. It appears that's kind of in the right-of-way. Are these, is this on their site? Is this on the city right-of-way? These are city streets, they're not private streets.
Correct. It would be within the city right-of-way, and because they're building on-street parking spaces that don't exist today, they would be public spaces, so potentially for visitors to the site. But there are several locations around the city where constructing on-street parking is allowed to count toward the required parking. We have that for the Edgewater Drive Special Plan, Baldwin Park PD, several other locations where that's been approved in the past.
Correct, but just to be clear, though, if, if a neighbor, because it's, there's retail around there, there's other apartments near there, if anybody wants to park in those five spots, there's nothing prohibiting them from doing that, is there?
No, that's correct.
So, so what they're really doing is paying for five spots, but they don't control it? I don't think, do they?
That's correct. They would be part of the city's public parking.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Anything else for Elizabeth? Let's hear from Ms. Wilson. Becky, are you out there? Oh, I see you're coming up now.
Hi, Mayor, I believe I've just been raised to a panelist. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, and see you.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you so much for your time today. I don't want to rehash too much of what, what Elizabeth has shared with you all, but I'll just do a quick screen share. Can you all see my screen now?
We can.
Elizabeth described the, the location of the 1.41 acres, requested to rezone to PD. I think this slide may be helpful with Commissioner Gray's question. So there are 72 proposed units. 60 of those are one-bedroom units, 12 of those are two-bedroom units. On-site parking, now with the additional six spaces, on-site, there are 74 parking spaces. As Elizabeth pointed out, there are also motorcycle parking and, and bikes. So that is over a one-to-one ratio for each unit. And then the five new on-street parking spaces would be guest spaces. As Elizabeth stated, the owner would be required to give a parking management plan. We are able to restrict number of cars per unit in our lease, and we would restrict that to one car per unit. I think that in affordable housing, it is not uncommon for these households to have one, one car. And then also just wanted to point out that we've worked with the Orange County Sheriff's Office Crime Free Multi-Housing Program to include the, the crime prevention through design elements. This is the aerial that Elizabeth showed. Just want to point out that the one-bedroom, one-bath, they're about 483 square feet, and they would rent right now at, at the set AMI for approximately $650 a month, as compared to our market study, which shows one-bedroom, one-baths in the area renting for over $1,000 a month. And then the two-bedroom, two-bath would be approximately $770 a month, and right now the market rate is 1,343. It's three stories in height, it's about 35, about 35 feet. I was relieved that Elizabeth had the same ratios that we did. We took a look at some of the parking reductions that have been given to other affordable housing, and we are requesting less of a reduction than was received at Amelia Court, Lexington, and Lexington Court, and the Pandana Phase Two. I don't know what the reduction was at the villas at Carver Park, but they similarly have a one-to-one ratio. So we have a little bit more than a one-to-one ratio. Just wanted to also point out, having heard some of the concerns were raised previously, the property is near Cimarron, where there is public transportation. I think we all agree that central Florida would like to have better public transportation than we do now, but when it comes to being located near a route, this is located near Route 28 that, that has a head time of 30 minutes, from 5:00 a.m. to midnight. One of the interesting things is my client, prior to getting their, their financing lined up with, with HUD, they had to, to get a, a market study. We had Real Property Research Group do this, and they found that 63% of all the rental households in the Cimarron submarket have one to two persons per household, and only 16% of the affordable housing stock in this submarket is comprised of the one-bedroom units. So we believe that there is a demand for the, these one-bedroom units. There's a concern about these units becoming overcrowded, if they're just one bedroom, you know, how many people are going to live in it? And HUD's Fair Housing Act practices limits two people per bedroom, and so we, we have a way to enforce that. And then in addition, the client is, is intending to use Royal American Management to manage this complex for them, and, and can do so in a way that will ensure there are not more than two people per bedroom, and that they can enforce the one unit or one car requirement. And with that, we respectfully request approval. As Elizabeth pointed out, this is just approval of the municipal planning board's action in August, and we will have to come back with the PD ordinances for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
All right, questions for Becky?
Mayor, do you mind?
Well, hold on while she's, is that Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, yes. Becky, two quick questions, if you don't mind. The drawing that you've given us only shows 64. I guess you'll be submitting another parking plan with the final drawings with your documents to the planning board?
Correct. We've worked with staff since this went to the municipal planning board to add more parking spaces, and so we will submit that as revised, and, and in fact, we're happy to do that, so you'll have it for your consideration when you consider the PD amendment.
Good, thank you. The second question really is a question about crime-free multi-housing with our OPD. It requires that we, there's a, a part of the engagement with your, with your landlord or the, the landlord to add some additional paragraphs for people who are arrested. There's some other things that keep it as a crime-free area. Have you looked at any of those? Are you familiar with that, the crime-free multi-housing that we did for the, through the Orlando Police Department?
Commissioner Stewart, I'll have to admit, I'm not intimately familiar with the, the provisions dealing with arrest, but to the extent that it keeps us in compliance with that, and of course, we have to be in compliance with our HUD financing, which also requires background checks.
Yeah. HUD may already be a little farther along than what we've done in some other locations, but I'll get the information and get Corporal Kirkpatrick, who specializes in that, to reach out to you and share what we have for our crime-free multi-housing.
I appreciate that.
I think, Becky, what he's suggesting is, since the development is in the city of Orlando, you probably ought to be working with OPD's crime-free housing policies versus the sheriff's.
Got it.
Commissioner Stewart, did you have further?
That's it, thank you very much.
Okay, further questions for Becky? Why don't we try a motion to have it before us, and then we can have a discussion? A motion to accept staff's recommendation?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Burns, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Commissioner Ortiz wanted to go last. Is there anybody else that wants to comment?
Yeah, Mayor, I will if I could. This is Commissioner Gray. Look, I, I, it felt to me like two weeks ago, when this came before us, that when Commissioner Ortiz raised his hand and said, "Look, I'm not sure this is the best design," I, I kind of felt like he got a lot of pushback, and I, I think it was unfair. Look, we all have issues in our different districts. Mine happens to be a, a growth district. So I deal with Brooke and Elizabeth, they're on speed dial, they probably hear from me more than they want to. But I, I deal with a lot of growth issues, and, and look, our staff is very talented, but staff doesn't have all the answers. I don't have all the answers, but is, if, I would just say, if we as a commission can't take a proposal, even if it passes MPB, and try to pause and try to make it a little bit better, then I, I think we're kind of failing all of our residents. We, we have a duty to make things better. And so I want to applaud Commissioner Ortiz for raising his hand. This is a better plan. Look, the thing that bugged me about this is, even though you had a one-to-one ratio, how, how do you look a, a mother in the eye and say, "Yeah, you can take your baby out to the street and put your baby in her car seat on the street." To me, that's not acceptable. If we can't have enough parking spaces within a development to keep it safe, then we ought to do everything we can to try to make it better. And I, I would say, "Look, in two weeks, we came up with a solution, not the end of the world." So for me, this is kind of a, a gauge as we go forward. We're going to have a lot more opportunities. We need to do affordable housing, but we don't need to do inferior housing. And so we need to work together to make things better, and not ideal, but it's not going to be perfect, but it's better. And so I just want to thank Commissioner Ortiz for raising his hand and saying, "Look, this isn't acceptable, let's make it better," and I think we have. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do, staff has worked the last couple of weeks with the applicant, and I think tried to meet some of your concerns, Commissioner. I'm, I'm supportive of this project, because we have to have affordable housing, we need product, and as we've tried to locate housing for homeless, what I have found is we have a lack of one-bedroom apartments in our community. We're largely two- and three-bedroom apartment units, so I'm happy to see some one-bedrooms actually being done, and then not done in, well, actually, one-bedroom rather than, than efficiency type of things, too. So that's a better product, and I would hate to punish them on the parking side of things for upgrading the type of apartment that they're actually supplying.
I totally agree, sir, but again, I hope you can understand, if you're one of the five that doesn't get to park in the lot, and you happen to have small children, or you got to bring your groceries in, to me, that's somewhat, it's certainly unsafe, but also I would suggest partially demeaning to say, "Look, take your baby out to the street and put your baby in the car seat when you got cars going by on the street." I don't think that's acceptable, and that's why I think it's, it's fair. And I was a little bit insulted by the applicant's response that was in the media. I assume it was an actual quote, because it had quotes on it, to say he was infuriated that we didn't want affordable housing. We want affordable housing, we just want to make sure it's not inferior affordable housing. It should be safe for everybody. This is better, and I totally agree. So I'll, I'll be quiet, I'll let Commissioner Ortiz do his thing.
Anybody else, or I'll go to Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, out of my 35 years in public service, 26 have been committed to elevating the quality of life of our community. As a public servant, I know every street in my community, and I've probably worked tirelessly to help public grow to become strong, diverse, and efficient. I dedicate my time to learning about my residents, identify their needs, and I ensure that every, every project brought to the table provides them with the opportunities to grow and excel in life. As the best communities in the state of Florida, if you have lived long enough in central Florida, you, you would know that I have worked to provide my constituents with the tools and developments necessary to become a community that's, everybody, everybody feels proud, proud of it. But not only do I know my community because I'm, I'm involved, care for their well-being, and have organized residents and business leaders, I very well know about their needs because I'm also part of it. You see, to me, District Two is more than a community, it's a family, and when you're a family, you care about everybody's quality of life. Yesterday, I was thinking about how vulnerable our state is to hurricanes, and I thought about how we deal with the destruction left passing through central Florida. Trees in the middle of the street, damaged roofs, carts, et cetera. But we just don't move the trees out of the middle of the road and leave them by the curb or sidewalk. We clean the area up to prevent others from having to deal with the trees. We don't just place a tarp on top of a roof and leave it there. We fix the roof to prevent complications from home damages and health issues related to mold. But sometimes people come rushing to help with the best of their intentions, with quick fixes and lack of a thorough plan, and end up creating greater problems than the original damage, if you catch my drift. So as a public, as, as public servants that we are, we must be alert, because it is our job to represent our people. We protect them, help them, guide them, and fight to provide them quality of life. Today, we have in front of us what can be a great opportunity to do something good, or not so good for our community. The developer is conveying that there is a great need for affordable housing, and I agree. There's an incredible, there's an incredible need and a sense of urgency for affordable housing. But we can hide behind the word affordable and use it as an excuse to undermine the needs of our constituents, or to capitalize on their situation by landing an incomplete project that will further create problems in the life of those who are in desperate need of a home for themselves and their families. They claim that, that not everybody in those units will have a need for vehicles, based on national statistics that use as an example the city of LA, New York, and Atlanta. For the past 12 years, I have been working with planners, state, and local leaders to improve the option in public transportation in my community. Los Angeles, New York, and Atlanta come from some of the best public transportation networks, including subways, light rails, buses, and shuttles to nearly every corner of the cities. Also, I'm working on it, we are not yet there. Therefore, I say there's a huge need for parking, since this area's public transportation system does not support the density bonus. I wish that wasn't the case. Just to provide you with the background I have been working with, this area does not yet provide a very diversified portfolio of industries where someone can walk to his or her place of work. Taking one of the limited bus lines can be quite a challenge on a daily basis, since two of the three routes drive by every half hour, and the third every hour. The routes are mainly surrounded by limited business options and plenty of residential, having to do bus exchanges to arrive to major job creation destinations, like construction sites around the region, airport, downtown Orlando, International Drive, Disney, UCF, et cetera, or having to do casual grocery shopping. Is this what we're depending on for those that may not have a vehicle? So the developers, the developer is proposing an alternative to the parking issue, to contract a towing company to tow non-tenant vehicles out of the complex. These towing companies charge as much as $150 cash These towing companies charge as much as $150 cash, plus the expense of getting into the lot where the towing companies drop off the tow vehicle. They must bring money in cash to pick up their cars that was supposed to be safe and available for an emergency. If this is how we're going to treat our people living in affordable housing, how many times a week or a month will their vehicle be towed? How much money would they have to pay to be able to get their vehicles out of their alternative parking that the developer is proposing for those with a tight budget to live? Another alternative for the residents of the project could be the use of Uber, Lyft, or taxis. Is this viable? An average distance from home to work is 60 miles. The cost of the resident via Uber and Lyft is about $22. Let's, of course, keep in mind that the individual has to return home after work, so add another 22 in transportation per week, per day of work. So that is about $44 a day, $220 for a five-day week just to go to work. That leaves the individual with just approximately $953 a month, less for food, utilities, health, and other expenses. I think the over- lift taxi transportation can become quite expensive. So let's remember, we're trying to help, not make life more difficult. Many of our constituents in this particular area work in either restaurants, construction, hotel, or service industries. On average, in this area, we build approximately 18 to 24 units per acre in a multi-housing development. This developer is building an average of 51 units per acre. This is pretty disproportionate for a residential area of mainly families. This is not a college campus or a high-rise in downtown. Has anybody thought of what's going to happen with traffic? People trying to exit this property in the mornings from this location? I assure you, it's going to be another nightmare to handle. I read in the staff report, page 14, item 7, subsection B, that if a safety concern with the on-street parking arises, the city can remove the on-street parking, and the project will now be out of compliance with the PD. So we go back to square one. Let's not think for a second that I'm forgetting about my seniors. I was doing some calculations, and I'm very concerned about some of my most in-need seniors, those in great need for affordable housing. They won't qualify under these conditions, 51 to 80% of the area median income. Although the average social security check in the state of Florida is approximately $1,395, there are great numbers of seniors that don't get more than $800 a month in our area. How is this project considering the needs of these seniors? Ladies and gentlemen, it really saddens me that some people are only thinking from the standpoint of the word "affordable." I'm thinking of the word "affordable" accompanied by quality of life, safety, accessibility, and opportunity, which we should be working hard to provide to our constituents. In this day and age, we should also be considering implementing, in our code, requirements that address sustainability aspects, which in turn will help the consumer save money and live healthier. Affordable housing should be seen and treated as any other kind of housing development. We should not downplay the importance of it by cutting corners or trying to capitalize on people's challenges. This is an opportunity for us to help our fellow humans to live a life of purpose and productivity. So let's dignify them by doing things right. I've been given the responsibility of representing my community, and they expect me to help them by protecting them, defend them, and guide them. I've worked really hard to do so, and I know my community believes in me, supports me, and works with me to get things done. What's even better is that one can see the positive and successful changes and goals we have attained as a community in District 2. But I also understand that I'm one vote out of seven. I would expect each and every one of you to let me, with the support of my community, to lead this effort, for we know what's best for our community. However, I respect each and every one's of you and pray that you love my community as I do and can see through my eyes what I see. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners.
Mayor, may I ask?
Mr. Hill?
Thank you, and as I respect Commissioner Ortiz and the people of his district and his leadership, and I know he's a man that care about his community. I must say, Mayor, a no vote in council to this will be a travesty. We will be sending out a message that not in my backyard, it's okay to have affordable housing everywhere on the west side, but not in my backyard, not in my suburban area. You know, gentrification to me is not about color, it's about economics. That yes, I will champion for my community, but I will not champion for the poor. You know, when I think about not creating affordable housing on the east side, I think about how those on the east side, because the lack thereof, have had to travel to the west side of Orlando in order to find affordable housing. Yes, Commissioner, I have a very large Hispanic demographic on the west side of Orlando in District 5 and all of my affordable housing units, in which I have a great relationship with. So they're my demographics too. But I find it the same fight that I fight when I say that we needed affordable housing on the west side is everyone deserves safe and quality housing, no matter of their income. Most folks that need affordable housing council don't care about going to the street and bringing in the grocery. They care more about not sleeping in the backseat of their cars with their children. And that's what we have. Families sleeping in cars, sleeping on bus stops, right here in the city of Orlando, that look like me and you, Commissioner. Well, I'm sorry, forgive me, because I know I get in trouble with you when I say black and brown, and you remind me all Hispanics aren't black and brown. But most of them look like me, and they happen to be Hispanics too. And they're light-skinned also, and Latino. And they're coming to the west side for refuge, so they don't have to take care of their families on the streets of Orlando. But what happens when they do that, and I welcome the people of the west side, but then there's a travesty. Most of their support systems are on the east side with their family members, where they can go pick up their children from school if they're still at work, like us. Most of their cultural restaurants, like we have a multitude of soul food restaurants on the west side. I think it's separating people from their culture. It's separating people from people that they can identify with when we start saying that we do not put things in place. No, this is not an ethnic or race thing. It's a real thing, all right? When you say you know your community, I'm not disputing that, but your community is hurting, Commissioner. Your community needs affordable housing, Commissioner. Many of them have been laid off from OIA. I've spoken with them. Many of them were in the tourism industry, laid off or furloughed, or hours cut. Many of them in the hospitality industry, hours have been cut. Can't afford some of the rural homes that they probably had in your community. They're in District 2, so they're going to have to downgrade, all right? Many of these, yes, they are college students that was probably sharing, need these affordable housing units. Tidbit, Ability Housing on Mercy Drive, the bulk of it is one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Paramore Oaks, the bulk of them is one bedroom and two bedrooms. Fern Grove, what we're getting ready to build, one bedroom and two bedrooms. When we start talking about the transit system, at least you guys got a route that goes every 30 minutes. Usually, on the west side of Orlando, we got to wait an hour, hour and a half just for a bus. That's nothing new. It is, as we continue to try to develop our mass transit, that is something that we're working through. But when we talk about somebody sitting on a bus stop, waiting for a bus versus living on a bus stop, think about that. Now, Commissioner, you always said you wanted a CRA. Been fighting for it for years. Have been fighting for this kids' zone, Commissioner. But how can you want a kids' zone, which is specifically designed for disadvantaged and low-income youth and children? But you don't want to build something for them to stay? I say you can't have it both ways. You can't have taxpayers' money so you want to take care of the disadvantaged, but you don't want to create opportunities of housing for them. If they're not housed, they can't go to Inglewood Kids' Zone. They can't. They can't. Or do you need these Inglewood Kids' Zones for your suburban children? Or are you trying to create it for poor children? I posed that question. Yes, I said it, and I mean it. I said it, and I mean it, because I don't think we should be fighting for affordable housing. We're talking about 79 units. We're not talking about 7,900. So why should it always be, and I welcome affordable housing on the west side, but why should the city of Orlando continue to put social service programs and affordable housing just on the west side? It's enough love to go around. So I say, Council, it is our obligation and is our duty that we sworn to not to take care of some of them and not take care of all of them. We're talking about children here. We're talking about generational poverty. Are we going to continue that by not giving these children and families safe places to stay, especially in a pandemic? Especially in a pandemic, are we going to fight about five parking spaces when we have thousands of families getting ready to be dislocated and getting ready to not be able to have housing because of the loss of income and revenue? So my hope is today that we do the right thing. This is just a vote for to accept the minutes. This is not a vote to accept the project. But if we continue this, I am going to be looking at each and every one of you, each and every one of you, when we start talking about housing and affordable housing and social services on the west side of Orlando. We should all take care of all the people in all of our districts and not just one. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, may I say something really quick? It's not going to be confrontational at all. Trust me. I just want to rectify for the record. I've never, never, ever been against affordable housing. As a matter of fact, for the past 12 years that I've been here, I've been fighting to get funding for affordable housing. If anybody talks about affordable housing, it's this gentleman here. I don't know where this is coming from, because it's not about the affordable housing at all. It's about an issue to provide a quality development, affordable development, quality affordable development. I want that development. I've been wanting that development. I've never said I don't want the development. So you need to listen better before you speak, because I have never said any of that, first of all. That's the first thing I want to say. And the second thing I want to say is that, please get off of this black and brown issue. I didn't mean it like that. I was correcting you in a sense as something you need to understand what's raised and culture. That's it. But it's not for something to you be so upset. I apologize if that offended you, because it's not about that. It's just an issue that is going on, and I was just trying to correct you so you don't confront somebody else who tells you something else. I apologize if that offended you. But let's get off of this. We need to work together here, okay? And as I said before, I even proposed to this project to drop it down to 65 units, because that would have increased the amount of parking. That would make it a lot more comfortable. Ladies and gentlemen, there's only one entrance in this particular project. This is going to be a nightmare. We're looking for quality. You know what? Why shouldn't we treat the people that are looking for affordable housing with the same quality we treat anybody else? That's all I'm asking. I am for affordable housing, but quality affordable housing, let's look for all the elements that we can to make these people feel comfortable at home, proud, dignified. That's all I said. That's all I said that day.
Yeah, and we only have, and Commissioner Ortiz, you know I'm okay with you. I'm just a very open person, and I'm transparent, and I fight for all people, especially those that have been marginalized. All of our units over on the west side that are affordable have one interest in, and it's a safety issue, and you do really want that. That's why I think Becky said that they had worked with the Sheriff's Department and OPD regarding the SEPTAC and crime-free neighborhoods. These are some of the things they've worked with them on, is interests and things of that nature. The other thing that I do appreciate, and I know someone raised the thing about people doing things, becoming or overcrowding in their units. Well, Royal American is, I believe, a management company that makes sure that these properties are being cared for with integrity. We have Royal American. I didn't know until today that they wanted to be a part of this unit over at Paramore Oaks, doing a fabulous job. Over at Ability Housing on Mercy Drive, doing a fabulous job. So I'm not certain if they're at Pandana's, but I know at two of our projects, they are, and they're working with Fern Grove over there. But I do believe, Commissioner, that this particular project in your area, that staff and everything have reduced more so, as Commissioner Burns had alluded to, more so than anywhere else when we did these set-asides. So I don't see them, Ashley, you've been treated very graciously and fair. The bottom line comes down to, do we want children sleeping in backseats of cars and families living in their cars in a parking space at Walmart? Or do we want to offer, yes, people are sleeping in parking spaces at Walmart on the west side of Orlando? Or do we want them to have some type of housing with one parking space, and then we continue the process of trying to accommodate better projects versus saying no to a project that will serve some people, but not all people?
Commissioner, 61 units or 60 units are one apartment. I'm not going to see that many kids over there, I don't think. Maybe only other 12, and I agree with you. We definitely need to address all these issues. The same issue that we're not talking about is our seniors. What opportunities are we granting our seniors? And there's plenty of our seniors out there that I need.
One bedrooms.
This development is not going to help.
One bedrooms. It's helping at Pandana's too, Commissioner. Just say you don't want affordable housing in your area. Just say it, Tony.
Man, listen to this, please. Did you see the ratio I'm talking about? Please, study these things, okay? The 51 to 80 ratio doesn't allow for people on social security. That's what I'm telling you. Please listen. Please listen.
Now, you're insulting me, Tony. Most times, I listen more than you, because you don't know what you're talking about. I built five of them. Why don't you build one?
Wow. Let's not talk about knowledge, okay? Because it'll, let's leave it at that.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Yeah, I got it. Was there a member of the public, Madam Clerk, that wanted to speak that I skipped over?
We had a hand raised, but their hand has been taken down.
Oh, okay. I see the note. He wanted to speak on something else.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Mayor, if I could, I've been speaking a bunch. Does anybody else want to speak? I just wanted to ask Tony a question. Tony, as far as solutions, right? I heard you say reduce the number of units. Is that, are there any other solutions here?
Yes, only by seven, because that would increase the parking spaces. Now that we have, as you very well put it on the board, those five parking spaces outside there for anybody to take. So that only leaves only two parking spaces within the complex in addition to the 101 ratio. So I figure if we drop, if we drop the amount, the one single units to 60, I mean, altogether to 65, and then increase maybe to create more two-apartment units, so they will lose them. They're going to have to occupy that space in the building itself. But parking-wise, it would provide seven extra spaces. I think that's something that people can live more with. So, and of course, it was just as a proposal. I hope, you know, that they can look into that. As I said before, I've never been against, I sat down with the developer. I love what they have done in terms of the renderings and all this and that, but there's this particular issue that I'm really, really concerned about. We're going to see the results of this as we go, but you know what?
It's got to come back here for two readings. This is just the MPP minutes.
Yes. But thank you.
Would everybody raise their hand on this one, just so I know? On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye and raising your hand. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, I got it, 6-1 with Commissioner Ortiz speaking in opposition. Thank you. And Becky, I would encourage your client to have another conversation with Commissioner Ortiz, and see if you guys can get a little closer to, uh, agreement.
Absolutely, Mayor, I appreciate everyone's consideration.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Mayor.
I still love you.
Let's move to the hearings. Lease Agreement for the Holocaust Center. So this is a public hearing for the lease of city-owned land valued in excess of $500,000 as required by Chapter 13, Section 7 of the City Charter. Notice of the hearing was published in the Orlando Sentinel on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Approval of this transaction requires majority vote of all city council members. The property consists of the former Chamber of Commerce building located at 75 South Ivanhoe Boulevard and the adjacent property known as Senator Beth Johnson Park. As we move forward, the city is absolutely committed to operating a public park named in honor of Senator Beth Johnson, and we're exploring our options to ensure that that happens. Lease allows for the relocation to the Holocaust Center from its current Maitland location to downtown. A summary of the terms of the lease are included in the agenda item. The proposed rental rate is a dollar a year for good cause for the following reasons. Mission of the Holocaust Center is to use the history and lessons of the Holocaust to build a just and caring community free of anti-Semitism and all forms of prejudice and bigotry. The city desires to support the mission of the Holocaust Memorial Resource and Education Center, and to gather further the city's commitment to inclusion, respect, and diversity through the lease of the property. In addition, the city's Project DTO and Downtown CRA Plan identified the need to make a variety of arts and cultural experiences and destinations available in downtown Orlando. The new museum at this location also supports that vision, and I am confident this new museum in downtown will stand as a beacon of hope and a reflection of the city's values and culture of inclusiveness. I would like to call on the Holocaust Center's President, Michelle Feinberg, to say a few
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of the Holocaust Center's Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Dyer, and each of our city commissioners for your support and continued partnership as we work together to not only build a museum, but a cultural destination in downtown Orlando. We recently announced our partnership with the USC Shoah Foundation, founded by Steven Spielberg. Their technology and visual history archive of over 55,000 survivor testimonies from genocides around the world will contribute to a unique experience, immersing visitors into their lives. This museum is not just a place of things, it is an education center based in storytelling, allowing visitors to see the world through the eyes of those who have experienced some of the darkest days in mankind, as well as hoped for a brighter future. Our new Holocaust Museum for Hope and Humanity will use these lives, stories, and lessons to impact the future of our community, our country, our world. What started as a tiny spark of a dream, really just a conversation imagining what we could do if only we had more space, were more visible, were more accessible, is one giant step closer to becoming a reality because of each of you and the signing of this lease. We are so grateful for the city of Orlando's belief in our mission and vision, and we look forward to continuing this journey to build a more just, caring, and inclusive community with all of you. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Michelle. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests for public comment related to this item?
No, Mayor.
Um, why don't we? Mayor, I'd be honored to make the motion to accept this, uh, to approve this lease, and if you'll give me a few minutes, I'll share some words as we close.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Commissioner Stewart, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, thank you very much for what you have done, and thank you for the work that y'all continue to do, uh, throughout the, the city, uh, and throughout our central Florida area. Um, uh, the, the core, I think, of, of the, of the small issues that we have to address concerning parking and access and, and those things around that building are all, um, uh, part and parcel to what y'all want to accomplish as well. And so I'm, I'm thrilled about being able to, uh, uh, have our staff work with you on those solutions. Uh, I'm also excited about some of the things that are gonna happen in the north quarter in the course of the next four, five, six years. And that's gonna help accentuate this as part of that, the completion of I-4, and some things that we've talked about in terms of doing, uh, uh, some, uh, two-way trafficking and that's, that study that we looked at several times. I think those are all gonna attract, uh, not only, um, uh, more people to your, uh, to the, to the museum, uh, to the, to the, the center, uh, but also it's gonna, um, create a, 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 a better environment for everybody, uh, and, and you guys will be that anchor. I, I'm so thrilled about, uh, uh, being part of this, so thrilled about getting a chance to, to work with y'all as you move forward, um, and, uh, and thrilled about seeing that park. Also, uh, as Mayor Dyer knows, Beth Johnson was a very important figure in, um, our city's history, um, and the role that she played with bringing UCF into our town. It is only appropriate that we continue to move forward in recognizing her and find a, a place that's appropriate to recognize her, uh, and, and her contributions to, to bring in UCF and the work that she did in Tallahassee. Uh, it's a legacy, I think, that, um, um, Mayor Dyer, you inherited, as well as my brother inherited, in terms of the work that's being done. So, um, so I think those are two great, moving forward, is, uh, we've got an opportunity to, to, um, honor Beth Johnson and an opportunity to move this entire project forward. Uh, and with that, Mayor, uh, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that I think this is critically important, because, um, I, I, I've been involved, you know, at the Holocaust Center in different, even, even as an advocate, when, when, you know, people used to demonstrate, hateful people used to demonstrate, and I used to go as a member of a community to, uh, to be there in solidarity with them, you know? I think there's a lot of hatred in this world, there is a surge in neo-Nazism now, and that now more than ever, this education is critically important, and it's, and I think it's, it's beautiful that it's gonna be in downtown. I think it is going to bring in a lot of folks, you know, from a tourism standpoint, but I think more importantly, from an educational standpoint, ensuring what a loving, decent community that we are, and these are our, these are our values, and these are our virtues, and, and, uh, you know, and acceptance, and not just tolerance, it's not about tolerance anymore, it's about celebrating all our unique, um, you know, differences that make us all special. And, you know, I just got to sell, I just got to participate in the Pride Shabbat over the weekend, and it was so beautiful to get to, to celebrate with our Jewish friends and learn about their religion. And, and I, I think it's, we, we do better as a community when we all come together and learn, and that's what this facility is gonna be all about.
And I, I had one last thing. I, I'm really excited about people coming into Orlando from the north and seeing this building overlooking Lake Ivanhoe and I-4. I, I think, um, um, I hope it raises questions on every person who sees it, uh, and reminds them of the type of community that we are. So, uh, uh, a museum tucked away someplace else is incredibly valuable in its own merit. This multiplies that because of its location, and where it's gonna be, people will see it, they'll know when they drive by what kind of city Orlando is. And I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Sheehan.
Mayor, one thing I do, another component that is, uh, just beautiful, that Beth and the board is going to, uh, to include in this beautiful, um, building, and that's so, so needed, especially what Commissioner Sheehan said during, uh, times such as this, when tension and division is so high, is that they're going to put a social and racial and civil rights and equity, uh, a piece to this. So it will cover the Holocaust, but it will also cover civil rights and other social and equities that has happened here, and bringing all of that together in one building is just gonna be so powerful. And I think people from around the world will come to this building, as Commissioner Stewart stated, and Commissioner Sheehan, to heal, build, and celebrate, and not forget.
Further comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the motion carries, and I do know that there are many members of the Holocaust Center Board that are with us today virtually, so we want to thank all of you for your continued commitment, uh, to our community, and we are proud to be a partner on this journey to build the new Holocaust Center.
Mayor, do we need to make it clear that this was a unanimous decision, because we had to have a supermajority to be able to approve this? Is it important to say that?
Well, well, just for the record, the vote was 7-0. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk, for hearings, ordinance, second reading, number one.
Ordinance number 2020-51, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the sign code amending Chapter 64, Parts II, C, and VIII, and creating Chapter 64, Part II, E, and Development Code to modify high-rise sign requirements and then digital sign requirements in the downtown special sign district, expand boundaries of the downtown special sign district, and provide for creative design exceptions, providing legislative findings, and for codification correction of scrivener's error severability in an effective date.
Move, second. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Burns. Madam Clerk, is there anyone that wants to speak on this ordinance?
No, Mayor.
Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Ordinance number 2020-52, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the feature land use map designation for certain land generally located at the northwest corner of West Sand Lake Road and Kings Point Parkway, comprised of 9.57 acres of land, more or less from mixed-use corridor medium intensity to industrial, changing the property zoning designation from the medium intensity mixed-use corridor district to the industrial park district, providing for amendment of the city's official feature land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's error, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Burns, second by Commissioner Stewart. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify?
No, Mayor.
Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move to ordinances on first read. Number one.
Ordinance number 2020-39, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located south of Beltway Commerce Center, industrial parks between State Road 417 and Young Pine Road, and comprised of 243.1 acres of land, more or less from general industrial in part, general industrial with the aircraft noise overlay district in part, conservation in part, and conservation with the aircraft noise overlay in part, to plan development with aircraft noise overlay district in part, and plan development in part, providing for a development plan and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's error, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
So, uh, move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wanting to testify?
No, Mayor.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Ordinance number 2020-53, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, granting a petition to expand the boundaries of the Story Park Community Development District, as initiated by the District's Board of Supervisors, amending ordinance number 2019-50 to expand the boundaries of the Story Park Community Development District, which is generally located east of State Road 417 and north of Moss Park Road in accordance with said petition, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's error, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. There would like to testify, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three.
Ordinance number 2020-55, an ordinance grant, granting to Duke Energy Florida LLC, doing business as Duke Energy, a non-exclusive electric utility rights of way utilization franchise, describing the terms and conditions related to the occupancy of municipal streets and rights in the City of Orlando, Florida, for the purpose of providing electric service, providing for severability of provisions, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner. Madam Clerk, anybody that wants to testify?
No, Mayor.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. PJ or whoever, can you get us prepared for, um, general appearances?